The November 26th meeting of the San Carlos City Council. And the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, I guess I have to say that each time until that disappears. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance? Do you think the chief is going to lead us?
Please stand in case of light. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, changes to the order. I don't see anybody asking for anything, so we'll skip that. Brings us to item three, A. Item 3A is call for nominations for mayor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I apparently read in the newspaper. There might be some discussion about this, so I would ask if you had some ideas or something that you might want to put forward before we start doing nominations.
Sure.
Or other people, too.
Yeah.
I mean, this is full discussion among the council.
Well, then, I'll just leave it to discussion for the full council before I say anything. Anybody would like to say anything?
No, I would just build on what Councilmember Grisilli said. Having read about it in the newspaper, I...
Sometimes things get out there. Well, I'll just go ahead and make some comments then. What I was trying to explain to Michelle Durand when she called and asked me about it, she, you know, saw that we were doing a reorg. And I just commented that, you know, we've had a bit of an unusual history here in San Carlos of late. And also, if you just go back to 2001, when I came on the council, that was also a bit of an odd year because it was another year where we had a resignation. David Buckmaster had resigned and moved out of town and left a two-year seat. And then during the election process, we had somebody, one person, run for that seat and come onboard in a two-year seat. And so it put things in a different way, you might say, when we went through the rotation, the typical rotations of mayor and vice mayor and so forth. So what ended up happening was, for myself, I was nominated and elected to vice mayor in my fourth year of my first term, which then I got to see in years after that, folks like Mr. Lewis and Mr. Royce and so forth come on the council and in their first term serve as vice mayor and mayor. So I got to see how it is normally done. But that ripple effect impacted, you know, my time on the council, and it also impacted Mr. Grisilli because, for example, for myself, I've been on the council for, I'm in my third term, and I'm serving right now as mayor, but only because, at least right now, only because we had a resignation. And so I got to thinking about all this, and I thought, you know, there's kind of an 18-month period here if you take the time that I was serving in place of the resignation and when I would normally expect to serve. And I thought, you know, both Bob and I are in situations where we were sort of trumped by circumstances, and wouldn't it be nice to split the baby, as it were? And that's what I said to Michelle Durand, and she so nicely printed that.
Very solemn on a comment.
There you go. That's right. And so I had talked to Mr. Grisilli about this idea of perhaps we do exactly that, we take the time period and split it in half, and if it were the pleasure of the council, of course, it's all up to you guys, it's not up to us, but allow me to serve about nine months, which would take me through, I think, until about March or so. And then we would go through this process again, of course, where we would call for nominations and so forth, and give Mr. Grisilli an opportunity to also serve as mayor before the both of us may or may not, you know, cease to be on the council, because we don't know, either one of us, whether we will run in 2013 or not. Or whether we'd win. That's right. We could run and lose. So, you know, stranger things have happened. So anyways, that's the proposal I would give, is allow me to serve for another few months, and then we consider nominations again in March.
Does this mean that we would have two feasts?
Probably, yeah. I don't know.
As often as possible.
No, actually, if I may, in all seriousness, if that's fine with you two gentlemen, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But, you know, if somebody isn't fine with that or has concerns, please feel free.
So then the only question, if everybody's fine with that, then the only question is to go through the procedure tonight to make it, you know, to do something official, as it were. If we did nothing and things could just stay as they are, that's perfectly fine. Or if council chooses, we could go through this process to make it official. It's something that's typically done at this time of year.
If we don't do it, it's not as if your term as mayor, it will expire in two weeks' time or something like that.
No.
Right?
Mr. Grisilli, I think...
The only thing I would recommend is, not that I'm adverse to feasts, but I would just do it, I think I would personally, I mean, I think we should have the nominations for mayor and vice mayor, and just set a date specific, whether it's March 1st or April 1st, or first meeting in March or April, whatever the time is, and I don't know what the time is, but set it so that we don't have to go, then we don't have to reorganize again. In other words, on March 1st, someone, I shouldn't say I, whoever is elected or nominated would be...
Preestablish the...
Preestablish it for this next year. And I'm not saying that you do that forever. There are some cities that actually have it ingrained. I got one from the city of Millbrae that had their, you know, reorganization. They already got the person as the mayor, okay?
But wouldn't we have to do the reorganization?
No, I don't think we do. I don't think we do. I think we could...
For the, another vice mayor?
No, no. I think we would do mayor and vice mayor tonight, saying on March 1st or whatever date, these people will be mayor and vice mayor.
The crystal ball out?
Sort of a hybrid.
Well, we're good until December next year. In December next year, you have to go through it again because there'll be different people in the council, and, you know, you'd have a reorganization then. But just that way, we won't have to have this reorganization meeting in March or April again, is my point. We just do it now and codify it.
So you don't want refreshments?
No.
Through the chair, is City Council anything they'd like to weigh in on what we just discussed in terms of process?
You know, the code of conduct provides discretion for the council, how to organize itself. You can make an effective date for when someone takes office as mayor or vice mayor in the future. You could decide to do as was suggested before, to have another meeting to defer that question and keep the current offices in place until that date.
To follow up on your earlier phraseology, Councilmember Grokot, what would be the date that would split things?
I don't know exactly. Maybe the city clerk could weigh in on that. I didn't do any math.
The date in March, you mean?
Yes. But when would most closely split the time period?
First meeting in March?
It would be the first meeting in March.
First meeting in March.
That would be the closest point to the first meeting in December.
March 11th.
March 11th? Okay.
So if I may just ask a question, by doing that, then we not only are taking nominations tonight to nominate the next mayor, but a second person, obviously, for vice mayor that is going to also start in March and just be the term to start in March, so...
That would be if your intention is to not have another reorganization meeting or vote in around March 11th.
I guess I'm not comfortable saying nine months out. Now, I'll go along with the rest of you if you feel... You've got a good image of, a good visualization of how it's going to work in March, but nine months from now...
You mean three months from now? Because March 11th is when the term...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just three more months. Never mind. I'm sitting here looking at that food.
Close the door.
Just, you know, not focusing on what I need to be focusing on. Okay. All right. I will pay closer attention now.
Just briefly through the chair, Ms. Boland, do you happen to remember the date at which we elected Councilmember Grokot to his current term of mayor?
I believe it was, I believe it was April, sometime in April. I can look it up real quick.
The second meeting in April, likely?
Yeah. It was actually June.
Yeah, I thought it was later than that.
He appointed you? Don't look at me, I don't know.
I think we had appointed Karen. She went from interim to... And then we, next meeting, we appointed you.
Okay.
I believe the acting assignment started, as mayor started, in May, and the recognition that that acting was now going to be permanent was probably in July.
Is it, we're talking about it up here, and we think it was the second meeting in June because Karen came on in the...
Yeah, I think it was either the first or second meeting.
I think it was probably the first meeting because I was on vacation for the second meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. I was backed by the second meeting. Okay, so it could have been the second meeting.
I think it was in May, I think it was in May when you took the gavel.
Yeah. Well, we find, you know, it's fine with me, whatever. March 11th.
So at this point, what, do we proceed with nominations?
If I understand, Mr. Grisilli's proposal is that we would, the vice mayor would call for nominations for mayor that would take effect March 11th.
Okay.
And we would do likewise, then the mayor to call for nominations for vice mayor that would take effect March 11th.
And otherwise, we just go with exactly where we are right now?
Yeah.
Right. Are you going to call for...
Well, like I said, I'd call for nominations and depending on how we want to, yeah, how the motion's made or the nominations are made, yeah.
I, okay, I believe it should be in the form of a motion, correct?
We need a motion, don't we?
You're calling for nominations.
Nominations right now.
And then if there's...
You're right.
There might be more than one.
And you close the nominations.
I would be pleased to nominate my colleague, Councilmember Grisilli, to take over as mayor on March 11th, 2013, even though that means he will no longer be pouring water for me.
You would have seconded that.
No, that's a nomination, so if there's any other nominations...
Oh, there's no, I'm sorry.
Right. Yeah, I know, it gets a little confusing, but that's fine. Any other nominations? Move to close the nominations?
I move that we close the nominations.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And by, we don't actually have to vote on it because it's by default, then.
Or we could vote on it.
We could vote on it. Let's have a vote, okay?
If you could, we could vote.
We need a motion, though.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I move that Councilmember Grisilli assume the wills and responsibility of being mayor effective March 11th, 2013.
And now I'll second it.
Okay, Grokot.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right. Now, it says here for the mayor to call nominations for vice mayor, so I guess that's my job since I still am the mayor. So I would open nominations for vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Mark Olbert to be vice mayor.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we need a motion to actually vote on Mr. Olbert being vice mayor as of March 11th.
I move that nominate...
No, that he become.
That he become.
Yeah, go ahead.
That Mark Olbert become vice mayor effective March 11th.
2013.
2013.
You want to second that?
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Grokot.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right. That brings us to item C. And if folks are prepared, want to make any comments or anything of that sort, now is the time.
I'm glad I didn't read the article before coming to the meeting because it got to be a surprise.
Very good. This is normally where we do have long speeches, but it is, it's a little bit different, so we don't need to have any long speeches, but...
Through the mayor, we'll re-agendize this particular item, and we will do an oath of office and do a transitional...
We have A and B, we'll just have C.
Right.
And I'll still be able to pour...
I was thinking...
Water for...
Move this way. When this is all, and I should note to the city clerk, because I think she sets up the nameplates, we walk in and, you know, I want to sit over there because I've never sat over there. Always sat over there.
Actually, I can tell you it's a great seat because you have all this extra space.
Well, so especially, I want to sit over there. As senior member on the council, I want to sit over there. So, all right. That brings us to item four, which is council communications and announcements. Anything, any council members would like to report on, any meetings they attended and so forth?
Well, this evening, I just came over from having attended the beginning of the Friends of the Library Board meeting, and that was following on the heels of last week, meeting with the city clerk, Christine Boland, and some members of the San Mateo County Library Office, the two deputy directors and a couple of their other staff, and took a look at some space on the second floor over in the library building as a possible interim library during the library makeover, this, coming up sometime this spring, with the idea of then the library being reopened in the fall of 2013. And it looks like it is probably a doable prospect that we would continue to have, although very much reduced in size, a space that people in our community would be able to go to to pick up some books. We'd continue to have the children's reading programs, have some computers available, and people wouldn't have to go outside of the community to get those resources. So it's still being worked out in all of the details, but it sounds like it's something that we're partnering on in a way that's going to turn out really great for the whole community.
To give a heads up to the community, was it talked about expectation date that they will start construction?
No, the date is still being a mystery. It's just spring.
Spring.
With an estimated closure of four to six months.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Couple things. Just one thing came in the mail. I hope everybody remembers that the, being that I'm former president of the Chamber of Commerce, I still get all this stuff. The chamber is, as far as I know, still taking nominations for Citizen of the Year, San Carlos Citizen of the Year. I think the nomination's closed very soon because they're going to announce the winner at the Chamber Holiday Mixer on the 14th, or 12th, I believe, at Domenico's. So that's coming up. The other thing I wanted to report is I went to the Council of Cities Dinner a couple of weeks ago on a very rainy night, and it was in Pacifica. Took a little over an hour to get there from Foster City. But it was a very interesting presentation. I know this doesn't affect us directly, but we got a nice report from one of the heads of Caltrans on the progress of the Devil's Slide Tunnel, which is now slated to open in February. I won't tell you how much over budget it is, but quite a bit, but it, we saw a lot of, a nice video, and it's going to be, it's going to be very, it's going to be a very nice project when it's all finished. That's all I have.
And the roadway, Highway 1, is going to be a bicycle and pedestrian pathway.
That is correct. The old Devil's Slide's going to be turned into a bicycle pedestrian. It's actually going to, they're going to turn it into a park, and they have already started shuttles from downtown Pacifica to, up into that area to tour it.
Have they named the park yet? The Maltby Park or something like that, I heard rumors?
I know they have a nameplate for it, I honestly don't remember what it is.
Anyone else? Mr. Royce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended today a congestion management and environmental quality committee meeting, affectionately known as CMEC. It's one of the subsidiary committees of CCAG. I just wanted to mention, both for the council's benefit and for staff's benefit, that there is a proposal moving forward to assess the opportunity and support for doing something countywide in terms of improving stormwater compliance. And since that's obviously also a topic for us locally, I think it'd be important to make sure that we're in coordination with those county efforts, and I'm sure we are through Public Works. And then they're also looking at, although there was no action taken today even to recommend moving forward, it's going to come back again, they're looking at relaunching the, on a countywide basis, the Green Business Program. And part of the relaunch concept would look to the member cities and the county itself to contribute money to help pay for the program. So that, too, is something that I'm sure staff will want to stay on top of.
All right. Mr. Vice Mayor?
The only thing I think I have to report is relative to the City and County Association of Government, CCAG, our executive director, I might have mentioned this before, is retiring in about a week. And we are in process of, this week and next week, interviewing candidates, and we hope to have a person in place by the middle of December to take Rich Napier's place after 17 years.
All right, thank you. And I have nothing to report. But that does bring us, I believe, to, keep track here, sorry, turn the pages, yes, I'm right. 5A is presentations, a presentation of proclamation declaring Arbor Day in San Carlos on Saturday, December 8th, 2012. And I believe our Parks and Rec Director has a thing or two to say about this. Do you need it? Do you need this right here, or...
Actually...
Should I bring it down?
I've got a copy of it right here, Mr. Mayor, so I can actually go from this point forward. Good evening, Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. And as you may recall, last year, we had the distinction of being designated a Tree City USA. There are certain provisions that come along, come with having that title. One is providing a budget that allocates $2 per capita for the care of trees. Another condition is declaring an Arbor Day. And Arbor Day doesn't have to correspond with the National Arbor Day, it's just a day that we take some time out with recognition of our trees and our urban canopy program that we have here in the city. So with that, we did an Arbor Day last year. If you recall, we planted trees down at Lorient, at Lorient Park, and the Lions Club were generous enough to donate the trees for that special occasion. And this year, we're going to do something similar. This is going to be at Burton Park on December 8th. It'll be at 10:00 a.m. in the toddler play area where the Youth Advisory Council is going to plant a couple of trees that they paid for out of the proceeds from their fundraising projects throughout the year. So I invite the public to come and join us in that celebration of Arbor Day. And in recognition of being a Tree City USA, we'll be doing this on an annual basis. And again, the celebration itself can move anywhere throughout the year, depending on what the project may be for that particular time. It just so happened that last year and this year, I think the events were actually only two days apart. So it's a good time to be planting trees if that's part of the celebration. So again, this will help, the trees in that particular area will provide some shade for the youngsters when they're playing there during the hot days of summer, so...
That's again December 8th at what time?
At 10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
And again, at Burton Park in the toddler play area. They're called the Todd Lot.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
That brings us to item six, which is public comment. This is a chance for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on our posted agenda. And I don't see anybody rushing to the podium, so we'll move on from that, which is item seven, then, is approval of the consent calendar. These are items that we would approve as though they were one item, a basketful, if you will, and unless there's somebody from the public, the council, or the staff that would like to pull one of the items for separate discussion.
Mr. Mayor, item C, adopted minutes of November 13th, special meeting at 7:00 p.m. During that meeting, we approved a consent calendar, item G, which authorized the city manager sign an agreement for spending funds relative to Crestview Park. And I needed to recuse myself from that item G, so I'd like to see the minutes reflect that I had to recuse myself on that item. I just wanted to make sure that we squared that away. Because I live within 500 feet of the park.
Okay. So do we, the vice mayor's made comment on that, but we don't have to actually pull that item, is...
You would normally pull an item if you were amending it, but I think if the whole council as a group is comfortable with the consent calendar motion, including that revision, that's appropriate as well.
Very good, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would ask that we pull item I, 7I, and deal with that one separately, please?
Item I, okay. And myself, I was going to ask that we pull item J, just for the sake of the record, if you will, just to have a brief staff report on that. I don't have any questions or anything on it, but I just want to make that available to the public with a little explanation from staff on what we're doing as an employee benefit there. So with that, I would entertain a motion for items A through H and K and L.
Mr. Mayor, I move the consent calendar, items A through H and K and L.
Second.
With the adjustment of my recusal on...
And in addition, we want you to read the title to item H, the ordinance that you're approving on the consent calendar.
All right, Mr. Olbert, that's your job. You made the motion.
Yes, it is. Let's see. Including item H, ordinance number 1451, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amendment chapter 3.12 of the San Carlos Municipal Code regarding purchasing of city supplies and services.
Thank you. Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right. We normally take these items at the end of the meeting. This is the end of the meeting, so we'll take item I. Mr. Olbert, your item, item I.
Thank you. I had asked to have this one pulled from the consent calendar. I had voted against this when, on its initial reading, and I just wanted the opportunity to vote against it again. But I do want to clarify, as I did at that earlier meeting of ours, I have the utmost confidence in staff to be able to manage a higher approval level, as was, as is proposed in this amendment. But just given that it doesn't, the current level does not seem to be causing any kind of constriction in processes, it just didn't strike me as something that I was comfortable approving at this time.
All right. So we can, any other comment?
No, just going to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve item 7I. We need to read that ordinance to, to the city attorney. Make a motion to approve item 7I, ordinance number 1452, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending chapter 3.14 of the San Carlos Municipal Code regarding public projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grokot?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. All right. And like I said, on item 7J, if we could just have a very brief staff report. Oh, I'm sorry, I wouldn't have thought. Extra effort would be needed here, but...
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendon Hall, Administrative Services Director. So before you tonight is an agreement with Nationwide. They provide, they would be the provider for this benefit. This is a voluntary employee benefit association, or AVIBA, account, that our employees can put money into on an annual basis toward health care after retirement.
Very good. AVIBA stands for, because Mr. Grisilli and I both don't like acronyms?
Voluntary Employee Benefit Association.
Oh, you already said that, but, okay. Oh, you already said that, but, okay. Very good. Sorry to give you a hard time there. All right. So this is something that we discussed in closed session at one point, and then added to the benefits of the employees that they could participate in this, just so folks know. Very good. All right.
Through the chair, if I may. Ms. Mendon Hall, what is the cost of anything to the city of offering this additional benefit?
There is no cost to the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the item?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry to put you through that. Okay. So I would entertain a motion for this item.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of Resolution Number 2012 dash...
76.
76. Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Nationwide Retirement Solutions to establish the voluntary employment, employee, excuse me, beneficiary association, otherwise known as VIBA, for the Teamsters unit.
I second the motion.
All right. Grocott.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?